Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dean Walker. I'm the president of the School Board of Pittsburgh Public Schools. I'd like to call to order the Tuesday, July 22, 2022, public hearings on the proposed closing of the Friendship School Building. This hearing is required under Code 780 of the Public School Board Code of 1949. It was advertised as required on July 3, 2025, in the Pittsburgh Post-Gazette. Comments at this hearing will be limited to the proposed closing of the Friendship Building. Just as we get started, as with all of our public hearings, or most of them, Ms. Erica Gandy will be moderating our hearing tonight. Each speaker has three minutes to speak. You're only allowed to speak in the registered number that you signed up for. You're not able to share your time with any other speaker. Speakers will be called one at a time, and as your time begins to wind down, if you are here in person, you will see the red light blinking on the microphone. If you are online, testifying virtually, we will give you a signal through Zoom to let you know that you have 30 seconds left. As with all of our public hearings, we will give preference to our testimonies that are here in person, followed by our virtual testimonies. Tonight, we have 15, I think, in person, and then the rest will be virtual. If you missed your turn to speak, we will give you a chance at the end to see if you showed up a little bit late. Otherwise, your written testimony, if provided, will be uploaded to our district website tomorrow, along with the video recording of this meeting. If you are interested in watching and don't know how, you can go to our district website. There is a link for the public hearing on the homepage. And with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Gandy to moderate tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And our first speaker this evening is Karen Cornell.
Good evening. I truly do not understand the reason to close the Friendship School Building. While, yes, a school is more than its building, our students still deserve to be in a building with adequate space if that is available to them. And I really believe that Friendship School should remain a public school. Pre-K students are excluded from the ERA modeled enrollment capacity and the 2016 PPS detailed capacity charts. This is at least 100 students not included in the planning process. According to the capacity charts, Friendship has 495 seats, and Linden has 499. We would not gain seats by moving to Linden and would possibly lose seats for this program. Why would we want to limit the capacity of a program that maximizes enrollment and also has a waitlist? The physical layout of the school also matters. Being able to utilize a flat, full city block with space for a garden and multiple spaces for outdoor learning is priceless, and something that our whole community will lose if the school is closed. Linden does not have substantial improvements compared to the Friendship Building. Yes, Linden has an elevator, but that seems to be the only substantial upgrade. There are no ADA bathrooms, and parking is more limited. Linden also has exterior condition challenges and will need work, too, in the coming years. Finally, the Friendship Community Group has proven their commitment over the years to the school through their maintenance of the playground, which is excellent, and to the property. They have proposed several times to help fundraise and find grants to improve the school. It is not clear to me what the motivation is for walking away from this valuable partnership. The board has still not made it clear to me as a parent why this particular move is necessary. I was disappointed to learn that PPS did not do a walkthrough of the Friendship Building in March since it was proposed to be closed. This makes it seem like the board is not interested in listening to our concerns and plans. I have been trying to follow along with this process, and it is apparent I am still looking for clear ways for the public at large to see and to understand if the promised programs and equity improvements will actually be delivered. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Megan Palamo.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Megan Higgins-Palomo. I'm a parent of a PPS Montessori student, a resident of the Friendship neighborhood, and I serve on the board of the Friendship Community Group. I'm here tonight to voice not only my strong opposition to the closure of the Friendship School, but that of the Friendship Community Group, our local elected officials, and hundreds of members of the community. In your email, you will find a packet prepared by the Friendship Community Group. It includes letters from stakeholders in our community, an architectural analysis of the proposed renovation costs, and a petition with 465 signatures urging you to vote no on the closure of the Friendship School. This is more than just a school building. It is a neighborhood institution that supports one of the most vibrant and sought-after elementary programs in the district. It's a school my child and her classmates walk to. It's a building where Montessori learning thrives. It's a space where children from across the East End play. It's where neighbors gather and civic life flourishes. The proposal to close this school doesn't just threaten students' academic continuity and the community of parents and teachers built around it, it threatens the stability and vitality of an entire neighborhood. Study after study shows that school closures increase crime, invite disinvestment, and leave behind blighted buildings that drain public resources. And if you haven't come across these studies yourselves, I've provided links in the packet. You don't need to look far to see the detriment these closures have on communities. Pittsburgh already has its share of shuttered schools from the previous round of closures that still sit empty and decaying to this day. Is that the legacy that you want to continue for our city? Right now, we have a thriving school program. In a beloved school, we have stable, vibrant space that supports recreation, safety, and community gathering. It's a space that families from across the city choose to live near. And yet, PPS is proposing to shut it down. I stand here tonight with the voices of over 465 residents, families, and stakeholders who oppose this plan, and I will stand with the thousands more who will feel the ripple effects of this decision. The Friendship Community Group is ready to work with you to help secure grants, build partnerships, and do whatever it takes to ensure this school meets 21st century standards while honoring its place in our community. We have a robust community of professionals, parents, and stakeholders willing to lend our expertise, but we cannot do that if the doors are closed. We implore you to reject this proposal, invest in what's already working, and stand with your constituents to keep the Friendship School open. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker, Martha Reek. No, turn it on.
Okay. I looked at a calendar today and realized that I have been a PPS parent since August of 2013, when my oldest started at Pittsburgh Montessori located in the Friendship Building for pre-K for, called off of a waitlist into a very popular program as one of the only pre-K options in our district that we could get into since we did not qualify for the subsidized one to get priority placement. I will be a PPS parent through May of 2037, is what I calculated today. That means I'll have 24 years of tenure as a PPS parent, which, to be honest, is a little insane, but I also want to point out that that's a lot longer commitment than a lot of our staff and any of the board terms that we've had in recent years. So I think I'm justified in coming here again, speaking up again, about my concerns to the current approach to the closures and consolidations that we're taking in this district, despite having come to multiple hearings per year. Let's all come out, and I guess this is just a new hobby. My youngest does attend Montessori now, and in case you were wondering, I do plan to keep him enrolled in this program even if we move to Linden. As long as we have a public Montessori program in PPS, I'd like him in that because I believe Montessori education is really powerful, and we really should be opening more Montessoris instead of shuffling and closing other elementary magnets. But I digress. I can be okay with my Magnet program moving. I can be okay. But I am still not going to be okay with your plans to close all the other elementary Magnet school programs or close and divest the Friendship School Building, which is why I'm speaking tonight. The building was built in 1899, making it a community asset that is rich in history and has served students for generations. It has the potential to serve students for generations to come. It is uniquely situated with direct access to much of the East End. It's located at the merge point of five densely populated neighborhoods: Friendship, Bloomfield, Garfield, East Liberty, Shadyside, and is located within 1.5 miles of Lawrenceville, Highland Park, Laramie, Standen Heights, Morningside, and North Oakland. The building is conveniently situated near, but not on, some of the most heavily traveled streets and state highways in the East End: Penn Avenue, Negley Avenue, Center and Baum Corridor. But the building is located on Friendship Avenue, which means you're just blocks from those major routes and yet not directly on them. You're directly close to those three travel corridors and countless bus lines. Look at walkability scores. Friendship School has a walkability score of 92, a transit score of 65, and a cyclist score of 94. I encourage you to look at all of the PPS buildings that you're keeping and divesting. You can look it up at WalkScore.com or on other sites to gain a better understanding of the impact of how the geography of Pittsburgh influences how we move through the city. Friendship School is located on a large, flat lot encompassing a huge city block. I know it is not ADA accessible when last lax Eric.
Thank you for your testimony. And our next speaker is Sarah Latira.
I'm Sarah Latira, a parent of two PPS students, past PTA president at Montessori, and someone who believes deeply in the power of public schools to build strong communities. Schools anchor neighborhoods. I've spent nearly 20 years as a Realtor helping families put down roots in Pittsburgh. Whether or not they have kids, buyers research, what are the schools like? Can we walk there? Is it diverse? Do families feel welcome? And when a school closes or is moved out of its central location, the ripple effects are real. Families look elsewhere, property values can shift, and a sense of community starts to fade. Specifically looking at Friendship, why move a thriving, high-demand program out of a building that works into one that simply doesn't work as well? PPS capacity models paint a false picture of underuse at Friendship. In truth, we're at capacity every year, working with both Magnet and early childhood offices to accommodate waitlisted families. Linden's calculated capacity is only four students higher, yet it lacks many functional advantages: being on a hillside, many, many stairs, et cetera. Friendship on a flat fencing block with multiple outdoor spaces used as classrooms on a daily basis, a Grow Pittsburgh Garden, a layout that's safe and accessible for students. The Friendship Community Group has offered to support renovations, including ADA upgrades, air conditioning, and even an expansion to meet demand, none of which are physically possible at Linden, including the space to continue the Grow Pittsburgh partnership at the current level. Friendship sits at the center of five neighborhoods, serves students for many more, all easily accessible by walking, biking, public transit. Linden is harder to reach and serves a less diverse and less central community. Moving the program would mean longer commutes for current families, less walkability, less diversity, and fewer connections to the community partners we have in place, like Assemble, after-school programs, Kidsville, and local stores that enrich our curriculum through walking field trips and hands-on learning. Both buildings need updates, but only one supports growth. Moving this program doesn't make financial sense, doesn't make logistical sense, and certainly doesn't serve the best interest of our students or the city. Moving the program just disrupts children and families, sends a message, this neighborhood doesn't matter as much, and this community isn't worth investing in. Honor the community's investment and your own commitment to being future-ready by investing in Friendship, not abandoning it. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Stephen Winslow. Again, Stephen Winslow. We will move on to the next speaker this evening, Natalie Antonucci.
My name is Natalie Antonucci, and my children Vincent and Meredith will be incoming kindergarten and pre-K 3 students at Pittsburgh Montessori. We live in the Upper Hill, and this will be our fourth year at Montessori. I am here today, along with numerous parents and community members, to ask you to reconsider the closing of the Friendship Building. Moving Montessori to Linden is a lateral move with no identifiable gains outside of the elevator. Both buildings were built around the same time: Friendship in 1899 and Linden in 1903. Neither building is fully air-conditioned. The capacity of each school is practically the same. According to the ERS numbers, Linden can hold 31 more students. However, if you count the Friendship demountables, which were not counted in the ERS numbers, then it only holds four additional students. Both schools have green space and a playground, while Friendships are larger, flatter, and better maintained. Finally, and most importantly, the area in which the Friendship Building far surpasses Linden is location. If PPS will be keeping Magnet schools that are open to students across the district, then in order to keep these schools accessible for all students, it is of the utmost importance to keep these Magnet schools centrally located. The Friendship School is already further east than is ideal for a Magnet school. Relocating to the Linden Building would move the school even further east to one of the easternmost neighborhoods in the city. My son has a classmate who lives in the North Side. To get to and from the Friendship Building by bus, it is one hour each way. The Linden location would add at least 20 minutes in each direction. She is six years old. That is too long on a bus. In order to keep the Montessori program equitable for all families, it needs to be centrally located. Our current Friendship location is far better suited for a Magnet program than Linden. From what I gather, the primary factor preventing the district from keeping the Friendship Building for Montessori is cost. While the district is claiming that it will cost $16.57 million to update the Friendship School, the Friendship Community Group has also had a professional estimate done, and it comes in drastically lower, at $5.4 million. So I ask you, please, please, before voting, to close a school that is thriving and cherished by so many. Make sure that your numbers are straight. Get at least three more cost estimates with detailed breakdowns from contractors. Please be 100% certain that this very high estimate of $16.57 million is accurate. Plus, use the Friendship Community Group as a resource. PPS doesn't have to do this alone. The Friendship Community Group is offering to help secure outside funding through grants and other partnerships. Use that. Keep this historic building and thriving school community alive.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Cara Britannic.
Hello again. My name is Cara Britannic. My son is a rising first grader, and this will be his fourth year at the school. Tonight, I want to focus on something critical, the data that's informing your decision. While none of us can predict the future, in order to be future-ready, we still need to have the best data available, and unfortunately, the information that's been shared about the two buildings don't hold up to scrutiny at very basic levels. Let's first consider the onsite evaluation forms that are on the website. Right off the bat, that section title is misleading because there's only a summarized table of the schools. When I asked for the evaluation forms, I was told a recent walkthrough was not conducted of the Friendship Building since it was proposed to be closed. Despite that, you didn't even fill in the cells in the table with the old data for the Friendship Building. So how on earth can a thoughtful comparison and analysis be done of two buildings when you only share data for one of them? Is it because you've already made up your mind about closing the Friendship Building? Because that's what it feels like. Here are three examples of where the data simply does not add up. One, the ERS capacity for Linden is listed as 468, but the PPS functional capacity shows 499. So where did those 31 seats go? And which number are you using for your calculations? Two, the ERS modeled enrollment for Montessori at Linden only counts 243 students, leaving out more than 100 pre-K students. This significantly skews the utilization rate. When you continue to tout multi-age classrooms as a benefit of the program, why do you continue to leave those students out of the total enrollment numbers? And three, the Friendship Building's two demountable classrooms are used every day, yet they are not counted in its functional capacity. When included, the building has 495 seats, nearly identical to Linden. Do you really want to be future-ready and expand the program, or are those just buzzwords to try and get the community on board with your concept of a plan? You say this move is about expansion, but Linden offers no additional capacity. You say this move is about being future-ready, but Linden offers no room to grow, and we'd still have to move to remote learning if the extreme heat policy is enacted. You say this move is about opportunity, but it would take away our garden, our green space, and our community access, moving the program to a less diverse and more affluent area. If you truly cared about being future-ready, you would seriously consider investing in the Friendship Building, where you have a flat parcel of land and where, in addition, could be built, doubling the capacity of the current building. I urge you to correct the data, share it transparently, let it inform your decisions honestly. Some board directors have said families are being too emotional about physical buildings, but perhaps emotions are getting in your way, too, because the process hasn't been as quick or easy as you'd hoped. Reimagining of the district requires clear, practical, and collaborative thinking. Until this board commits to using accurate data, conducting transparent evaluations, and centers what's best for our children, I urge you, do not move the Montessori program. Instead, invest in Friendship. That is the future-ready choice our community, families, and children deserve.
Thank you, Cara, for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Lucy Thompson.
My name is Lucy Thompson. I go to Pittsburgh Montessori. I do not want to close my building because it has lots of outside space. At the end of the year this year, we did a kickball game that was teachers versus fifth graders, and there was even enough room on the lawn for every single student in every single class to come out and watch them. Teachers won, but I don't think that matters. It's just really, really fun, and I like the garden that we have there. It's a nice garden. I love it.
Thank you, Lucy, for your testimony. Our next speaker is Carrie Thompson.
In the PPS Future-Ready Facilities Plan update emailed to families last Friday, the district praised "this school's unique instructional approach, including multi-age classrooms, self-directed learning, and Montessori-certified educators." This experiential learning model includes unique tools like 3D models that help students understand fractions and ratios spatially, and drawers of words grouped by parts of speech to learn grammar concepts. These Montessori materials shape how the classrooms are organized. As you heard from Lucy, the grounds of the Friendship School Building are a key piece of this experiential learning model offered to Montessori students. The garden special teaches about life cycle, seasons, nutrition, and more. School-wide events like the kickball game build community and respect for the roles that children have as they grow through the school. The grounds of the Linden Building do not offer the spaces needed to fully support the Montessori approach, nor does the building offer additional classrooms that would allow for more students to benefit from this model. I appreciate that the district has acknowledged what a special gift it is to Pittsburgh to offer a school like this to all children here as part of public schools. I would love to continue conversations about how supporting expansion of additional Montessori schools in the district would promote growth of families in the district and allow for community-responsive equity. One person I spoke with earlier in this process shared a previous plan that imagined a Montessori middle school in Pittsburgh, which would include outdoor education that would compete with environmental charter school. Another shared with me the bold idea of reshaping the teacher training program at Brasheer to teach the Montessori approach to early childhood and elementary education as a way to build a pipeline for Montessori teachers for an elementary on the South or West Sides. But there hasn't been space for bold ideas that actually re-center students and community needs in this process. Instead, we're discussing limiting PPS's future options by closing buildings in the neighborhoods where the land is most valuable, where the district can sell off its assets and perpetuate community stratification by siloing students into the charter schools that will open in these vacant sites. Yes, I would like there to be air conditioning in my child's school building. I want that for every child in the district. Yes, I would like to have a building that's actually accessible for everyone who visits: students, teachers, parents, and grandparents. I want that for every school in the district. Moving us to Linden does not make any of these goals accomplished, and making so many changes across the district at the same time will mean that even the best ideas, the ones that make the most sense, won't get the attention they need. I support moving to consistent elementary, middle, and high school buildings, as you've also put in this plan for the district. And I urge you to put your efforts there, not moving forward with closing a building that doesn't actually...
Thank you for your testimony. We will move on to the next speaker, Becky Mingo.
My name is Becky Mingo. I'm a Friendship resident, and I live directly across the street from the Pittsburgh Montessori School. In addition, two of my sons went to the Pittsburgh Pioneer School. I am a registered architect in the state of Pennsylvania, and I was a planning commissioner for the city of Pittsburgh for six years. Also, as the executive director of the Friendship Development Associates, a nonprofit community development corporation, I oversaw the development of both new construction and renovation of over $48 million of real estate projects. I am here tonight to encourage you to take a closer look at the numbers that your consultants and staff have provided about the facility at the Pittsburgh Montessori School. I do know that the Friendship School Building needs so much deferred maintenance. Back in 2006, many of my neighbors, including myself, worked with the Montessori School and the school district to move the program into the Friendship Building. At that time, a group of us volunteered to draw sketches and did budgeting for how this could be accomplished. In 1999, our neighbors came together with architects and other developers to figure out how to build a playground on the site, and we raised over $250,000, along with an endowment, to continue to take care of it. When I went to look at the renovation estimates prepared for the Pittsburgh Montessori Friendship School Program, and I started to compare apples to apples, I used the same square-foot numbers that the PPS staff used for other similar building renovations, the ones that the PPS Board approved in the 2025 budget, the similar numbers that have been used to calculate the costs of the Linden Building. When I use those numbers, the Friendship Building renovation, including an elevator, including the electrical PA upgrades that you guys have proposed, restroom upgrades, window replacement and air conditioning, it's $5.39 million. In comparison, the Linden Building cost estimates are estimated at $5.6 million. This includes the cost of moving from one facility to another, plus the comparable renovated costs to Linden. Keeping the Montessori program in Friendship would avoid an extra $200,000 of costs, and you've heard from many people about why the move on so many other levels doesn't make sense, but on an architect renovation level, it doesn't really make any sense at all. And I would encourage you to look to other people to get proper numbers instead of just your facility staff, who don't like this building for some reason. This building is a wonderful building, and we don't have to be afraid of these old, beautiful buildings. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Anne Ferris. We'll keep moving. To our next speaker is Rahi Chowder.
My wife and I, we moved to Chicago... My wife and I, we moved to Chicago, or we moved to Pittsburgh from Chicago about six years ago into the Friendship neighborhood. Our neighborhood in Chicago and our neighborhood here, Friendship, are both historic and they're full of character, but Friendship felt very special to me, had a real, very inclusive community. And don't get me wrong, I really love Chicago, but in the seven years that I lived there, I don't think I had a single conversation with one of my neighbors. Whereas, within a single year of moving into Friendship, it felt like we had a little family in this neighborhood. To me, a crucial part of the Friendship community is the Montessori School and the building that occupies, for many of the reasons that you've heard already today. To me, it feels like moving that school, moving the kids out of that school would be ripping a piece of the soul out of the neighborhood. So my concern is just really simple. When that school moves, what fills that hole of this thriving community school? I'll be honest, I have a three-year-old son, who was lucky enough to be picked to attend this magnet school, and I really don't want his learning to be disrupted. It's possible that after some disruption, he'll be okay at the new location, even though it'll take us a lot longer to get there. But my main concern is the Friendship neighborhood will suffer, and I'm afraid that I won't recover. So just really simply, I'm urging you to slow down the process and explore alternatives that can support the existing community rather than break it apart. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Jennifer Haven.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Haven, and I've been a resident of Friendship for 23 years. I'm an attorney, a past Friendship Community Group Board member, and a current Friendship Zoning and Development Committee member. You've cited several reasons why the Friendship Building must close, including decreased enrollment in PPS overall, budget shortfalls, condition of the building, and of course, a newly added one, increased excellence. The building utilization approach the Board has chosen to use in determining which buildings to close is specifically incompatible with the needs of Montessori programming, which requires space both inside and outside of the classroom for enrichment, extracurriculars, and specialized Montessori programming. The fact that you did not direct the Massachusetts consultants to prioritize the Montessori method when examining the building's use tells me you do not understand and you do not appreciate the Montessori method or its building's requirements. I urge you to research Montessori and why the Friendship Building's configuration is ideal before making your decision. You frequently cite enrollment also in identifying school closures. However, in 2004's Building Excellence Plan, you closed 10 buildings, and school enrollment dropped by 6,000 kids in the next two years. 2006's Right-Sizing Plan, you closed 16, which resulted in a loss of 4,000 kids over the next four years. And the 2012 District Realignment Plan, which closed seven, you lost over 2,000 kids in the next two years. In 20 years, with 44 schools closed, you have lost almost half of your school's enrollment. I urge you to reconsider making the same mistake again. Additionally, I strongly urge you to request and review the RFPs you have used to identify the costs that are associated with installing the HVAC systems and elevator towers to buildings of the same size, age, and configuration as the Friendship Building. You will find your current estimates are wildly inaccurate. Finally, closing buildings in under-resourced schools such as the Friendship Montessori will not help our children achieve excellence, but rather the opposite. Our students will suffer socio-emotionally due to the stress of adapting to a new school and classroom, and the anxiety and distress of creating new social relationships with peers and with new teachers. Our families will also suffer as they're forced to grapple with transportation difficulties, including longer bus rides, which for me would be a 37 to 46-minute trip from my home to the new building. In summary, your overly broad policy arguments about the impact of the Friendship School Building closure on the performance and budget are inaccurate, patronizing assumptions about what's best for our children. I urge you that our children should not be treated as collateral damage in your failed execution of services.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Gillian McTiernan. Push the button.
Think I would have noticed that by now. Good evening, my name is Gillian McTiernan, and I live just two short blocks from Pittsburgh Montessori in the Friendship neighborhood. I'm here today not as a parent of a current student, but as a neighbor, a board member, and a new mother. My daughter is just three months old, and one of the main reasons we chose to stay and grow our family in the neighborhood was because of not just the mere chance of her attending the school, but more so what it brings to our community. Every day, my husband and I walk past the Friendship School with our daughter and our dog. We see children laughing on the playground, neighbors shooting hoops, and even Shakespeare in the park rehearsing on the front lawn. When I initially moved to the neighborhood, long before I became a mother, one of the highlights of my day was crossing paths with neighbors on their way to school. A favorite of those daily interactions of mine is with a father-and-son duo who love dogs but are unable to have one. We smile, we exchange greetings, dog treats of course, and we'd all carry that joy into our days. We notice when someone's routine changes or when someone's missing entirely. In fact, when we lost one of our dogs, little Ronnie was one of the first people to express his heartfelt condolences to me. That kind of simple, human connection is irreplaceable, and it starts with the presence of a neighborhood school. Closing the school isn't just a program relocation for the residents of Friendship, it's a rupture in the daily life of our, and safety of our community. You've heard my peers discuss the 2011 study from the Pew Charitable Trusts that found that school closures often lead to higher neighborhood crime, declining property values, and increased blight. That affects every single resident, whether you have school-aged children or not. We're being told these changes that will reinvigorate Pittsburgh public schools, but closing a school that's already thriving, loved, and integral to a neighborhood will do the complete opposite. It will push families like mine to look outside the city, to suburban districts that promise more stability. That means lost enrollment, lost tax revenue, and lost trust in the system. The Friendship School is not a liability, it's a walkable, welcoming, and historically-rich community anchor, one that keeps our community vibrant, safe, and deeply connected. Why should we dismantle something that is already working? Please, I urge you, vote no on the proposal to close the Friendship School. Let's invest in the schools and communities that are already working, already doing well, and build from there. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. And now we will move over to our virtual speakers, and our next speaker is Carrie O'Connor.
Good evening. Just to be certain, my testimony refers to the Student Achievement Center rather than Friendship. I appreciate you hearing me out today. My name is Carrie O'Connor, I'm a special education teacher at SAC. I'm here today not just as an educator, but as someone who has witnessed the life-changing impact of this program firsthand. After being displaced by classroom closures and teacher cuts, a budget we are all impacted by, I never imagined that being reassigned to SAC would become such a blessing in my career. It's here that I have had the privilege of working with middle school, high school, and overage Special 12 students, all striving to meet graduation requirements often against steep odds. I'm urging you to consider relocation over closure of this essential program. SAC serves every single high school in the district. We are not just a building to close, we are a vital part of this district's infrastructure for raising the graduation rate and providing a second or even third chance for students who might otherwise be have considered, have been considered too old, too behind, or too much. Before making any final decision, I ask the Board to reflect on this. What happens to the students who are already struggling to complete Period 10 coursework at their home schools? The assumption that our students can simply be reintegrated back into traditional school settings fails to account for the realities they face, realities that SAC addresses daily. At SAC, we provide a structured, compassionate environment where students who are overaged and undercredited finally find hope. Through credit recovery and accelerated coursework, our students earn credits at a pace that makes graduation actually feasible. Many come to us after time at Schuman or ACJ. Others arrive because their unique needs were unmet in their home schools, or truancy has taken over their childhood. In every case, SAC becomes their best and sometimes only chance to succeed, and it works. This year, while attending Kara's graduation ceremony, I heard name after name, names I recognize from SAC, affirming that amongst the discussions with closures, students earned diplomas from their home schools because of the support they received at SAC. Just weeks ago, the Post Gazette reported that PPS had already exceeded its 2027 graduation goal, reaching 86.9% in 2024. Let's be honest, that number would not be possible without SAC. I recognize the difficult financial pressures you're facing, but closing SAC due to budget issues or declining enrollment ignores the critical work being done here. Students deemed too old, too far behind, or too much are precisely the students who need this program the most. The need has not gone away, and our work is not finished. Instead of closing us, I ask you to invest in us. Move our program to a location that meets ADA requirements and doesn't penalize the budget with fines. Save money by combining our building into a central location, allow us to continue serving the students who aren't succeeding in Period 10. Keep the dedicated and highly skilled staff who adapt every day to meet diverse, complex student needs, the same staff who helped contribute to that 86.9% success rate. This isn't just about saving a building, it's about protecting opportunities for students who still need us. It's about preserving progress, and it's about believing in a future where every student can guard this.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. And our next speaker is Valerie Webb-Amen.
My comments and concerns over the closure of Friendship's building are vastly different from my concerns over other school closures you will be deliberating on. Like the school model itself, this closure is unique in the FU Plan 2. Like most today, I share concerns about what happens with the building, class sizes, and the cost to fix the Friendship Building versus moving everyone to Linden and so forth. But honestly, I have the most concern for the Linden staff and community. Montessori families will keep their magnet status, likely their teachers, and they will still have the program they want. It appears that their school community will likely move as a unit from one place to the other, which is all that some of these other schools on the closure list can dream of. All of the other schools named in the closure plan, this one loses the least. But what happens with Linden? I know that, at least initially, many of the Linden kids will be absorbed into Montessori. However, what happens to the staff? Will they stay, be trained in the Montessori methods, and how will that training be implemented so that the program maintains fidelity? Or will Linden students lose their program and the trusted adults that they have now? What is the feeder for Linden students now? Currently, Linden students feed into the International Baccalaureate Program. Will that be the same, or does that change? The current plan has them feeding into Sarah and then Alder Rice, but many families chose Linden so that their children could go later to the International Baccalaureate Program. Will they have a choice? Also, why aren't we expanding Montessori access citywide or to upper-grade levels? We are about to have a Montessori charter competitor in the North Side that is already looking at K to A and is planning to expand to a Montessori high school. Why wasn't that part of the consideration? How about magnet status? Is Montessori going to transition to a neighborhood magnet with Linden feeder students getting priority? What about the little siblings that aren't in Linden yet but have older siblings at the school from outside the feeder? Do they get weighted applications? How will this closure eliminate the equity issue around Montessori? Will you stop allowing affluent families to buy their way into a weighted application by paying to go to the pre-K? How does this change any of the inequities around magnets when you make this the only one left? How do you stop people from just purchasing property in this feeder and gentrifying the neighborhood even further? You claim that you want to eliminate pockets of excellence, but all you're doing is shaking up everyone else and keeping the whitest, most affluent schools and students protected. That isn't achieving equity, it isn't addressing complications around magnets, and it certainly doesn't eliminate pockets of excellence that you claim is one of the driving forces of these changes. The only thing that this plan does for Friendship is add a new black and brown kids to the mix, and it doesn't actually address equity issues, magnet issues, or the pockets of excellence that you chose to keep. The sad part to all of this is that Friendship families are getting a whole public hearing when Linden families are going to sacrifice the most, and they don't. That's it.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Lily Amen.
So, when I originally signed up, I thought that I was going to just write the testimony and speak out, but I'm not, I don't feel like I should if I'm just gonna waste my time and feel like I'm speaking to a brick wall. So that's all I really wanted to say. Have a nice day.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Sarah Delucia.
Hi, I'm Sarah Delucia, and a parent of three Pittsburgh Public School students, two attend Kappa now, before that, they went to Liberty. My youngest is a student at Montessori. Would have been here tonight, but he's at camp, and this meeting is scheduled during summer break when kids are doing summer activities. I'll speak on my own behalf, however. I am a resident of Friendship, I'm the past president of the Friendship Community Group Board of Directors. My professional background is in engineering, the specialty in strategic business planning and asset management. I understand tough problems, and I understand making strategic choices. Closing the Friendship School Building and relocating Montessori to Linden is the wrong strategic choice. Moving the Montessori program to Linden will not add student capacity, it makes a worse overall ADA accessibility, and is a worse accessible point in the city of Pittsburgh. Montessori always, always has a high waitlist. Moving to Linden does not add enough seats, if any, to expand a program, one program that does keep families in the Pittsburgh Public School District and System. Both buildings, Friendship and Linden, do require investment. The assumptions that you've published to update the ADA access at Friendship are based on outdated, inaccurate information with broad-brusted cost estimates rather than real estimates and real architect inputs. Friendship, as we know, is on a flat parcel with green space, lots of accessible space for children to play and community gather. Accessibility is not only about inside the building, but how do children play outside the building? How do communities gather outside the building? Linden, we know, is on a hilly slope, outdated playpark surface, deteriorating concrete stairs. Emergency evacuation points at Friendship are all on flat routes from the building. I don't know that about Linden. Furthermore, Friendship Schools located at the intersection of many neighborhoods, not just Friendship, but Bloomfield, Garfield, East Liberty, Shadyside, Highland Park, Morningside. They're within about mile and a half walking distance. For students, many parts of those neighborhoods can walk to school. One and a half mile radius from Linden includes fewer neighborhoods, which are less economically and diverse from those that surround the Friendship School. Why move it? The Friendship community is unique in that we worked to bring the Montessori program to this building, worked, maintained, inspected the playpark, cared for the trees, resurfaced the turf. This neighborhood has done it in the past and is willing to do it in the future.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker this evening is Joseph Delucia.
Hello, my name is Joe Delucia. I want to keep the Friendship Montessori as it is an integral part of our community here. We have lived in Friendship for 17 years, we have three children, all attending Pittsburgh Public Schools, two at Kappa, and our youngest, Jesse, is going into fourth grade at Friendship Montessori. Even before we had kids, when we were looking at where to live in the city, the Friendship Montessori is one of the many things that attracted us to this neighborhood. It was really the key thing. The close working relationship between the Friendship Neighborhood Community Group that you've heard about, and PPS, and the city result in the playpark, which is used throughout the year, included by many day camp programs during the summer break. Kids from several neighborhoods use the playpark and basketball courts after-school hours and on weekends. Many kids have learned how to play soccer on the front lawn, how to ride bikes, skateboards, rollerblades, and other things up at the school. It's walkable for many city residents in East Liberty, Garfield, Parks of Shadyside, Highland Park, and Bloomfield, and of course, Friendship. Others have raised the issue of the absorbently high cost estimate for the needed upgrades. Reality is likely less costly... Reality is likely less costly to make the needed upgrades to Friendship Montessori versus moving the program to Linden, which also needs investments. In addition, there's something about this building, if you've ever been in it, the Friendship School, and how its original design complements the Montessori teaching method. It just feels right when you walk into that building. It's like a hand in a glove. This neighborhood has made significant, what I would call sweat equity and social capital and actual real capital investments into the Friendship Montessori over the past 20 years. Please do not move the Montessori program to a similar building and close Friendship School. Keep it where it is and make a similar-sized investment you would have to otherwise, so that the surrounding communities can continue to benefit from having this great building and school here. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker is Juliana Elaine. Again, Juliana Elaine. We'll move on to the next speaker. Jessica Jalani.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm a Pittsburgh public parent of two students, both of who have matriculated through or will matriculate from pre-K 3 through fifth grade at Pittsburgh Montessori. I'm also a resident of Bloomfield. I've lived here for more than 20 years. And I'm asking that the board please vote no on the decision to close the Friendship Building and relocate the Montessori magnet to Pittsburgh Linden. The facilities utilization plan at present entails the closure of three elementary schools within a very, you know, central part of the city with dense city neighborhoods. Pittsburgh Wool Slayer, Arsenal, which is being converted to just a 6th through 8th, and Friendship. Doing so will turn the dense city neighborhoods of Lawrenceville, Bloomfield, Friendship, Garfield, et cetera, into a public school elementary desert. And that makes the district vulnerable to charterization, further exodus to parochial and private schools or to the suburbs. The school at present is in a great central location in the East End. Instead of closing the building, Montessori at the Friendship Building should be updated to be ADA-compatible and expanded to offer additional space for students to learn and thrive. The Friendship Building is a beautiful and unique property that should remain a public asset and continue as a public school. Montessori at Friendship is on a parcel of land that is flat, occupying an entire large city block surrounded by green space. It is something that the teachers at Montessori take advantage of, and the students benefit from tremendously, as well as the community. It is a place where our youngest learners are very safe. There's a fence around the perimeter. It is not on busy thoroughfares, but it's very closely located to very busy thoroughfares in the city that are highly accessible via bus and via walking and bike. That is a huge asset that I think will not be the case if we move to Linden. The Linden parcel is about the same age as Montessori and on a very different piece of land. It is built into a hillside, making it impossible to expand the space and making the topography outside of the school not at all ADA-accessible or conducive to our youngest learners in particular. The youngest learners at Linden, it's my understanding that they are housed separate from the rest of the school. And the Montessori curriculum entails blending the ages of students in the classrooms, something that the district itself highlighted in recent communication. That would not be feasible at Linden. The Friendship Community Group and multiple elected leaders have submitted a dossier outlining their support to retain Montessori at Friendship. Please consider our voices in this situation. Instead, use the asset that you have, make it ADA-compatible, and use the opportunity to expand the space where it is. Thank you so much for hearing my testimony.
Thank you for your testimony. And our last speaker is James Fogarty.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. Let me just get my testimony up on my screen here. I am, James Fogarty, I'm a parent of Montessori children. I have benefited greatly from the Montessori program and am, you know, very thankful to the teachers, staff, and folks who have given my children such an amazing start in their academic careers. Both of my children have been pre-K to 5 students. My son will be going into fifth grade next year at Montessori. But as executive director of A-plus schools, I'm concerned that the current iteration of the program has become emblematic of the inequities that the overall future-ready plan is trying to address. In a district that's 70% students of color, Montessori is 64% white. In a district where 23% of students have a disability and services provided by an IEP, Montessori serves 19% of students with disabilities. And in a district that serves 64% economically disadvantaged students, Montessori has one of the lowest concentrations of kids living in poverty at 26%. Montessori was not always a low-poverty, predominantly-white school. In 2010, the school was 65% students of color and had higher rates of PSSA reading achievement for black students than it does today. The current set of choices, the school's location, and other factors have led to the shifts in the school's demography, meaning that less students of colors and students with disabilities experience the educational programming at Montessori. It also means that students who grow to a certain age aren't able to go into the program outside of certain areas within the building because of the current lack of accessibility and ADA compliance in the building. The challenges upgrading the current space are not insurmountable, but they do represent a trade-off that will mean less dollars available for capital improvements in other spaces where there to be investment in the Montessori building. And as others have said, it is a beautiful space and well-located. A move to Linden, especially if the less than 100 students are there, are given an opportunity to join the Montessori community, would in fact increase the school's reach across racial and socioeconomic divides. The community is right to be concerned about the future use of the building, and I would encourage the board and administration to consider a process for building disposition and sales that includes community input and involvement so that development can be a net positive for the neighborhoods where buildings are closed. Keeping Montessori as the only K-5 magnet post-move is also problematic, even with the benefits and investment that have been made into the program. Montessori's pre-K to K mixed-age classrooms could serve as a model for all pre-K to 5 schools and provide our early educators a pay bump across the district. I would encourage the district to look at how[1719.00]